Welcome to About Mansfield. It's your audio newspaper. I'm Steve Cassio broadcasting from the Selmark Studios along with the About Mansfield news team, Colleen Daniel. She's out there in Studio West. This is the April 16th, 2025, 267th edition. Did you file your taxes on time? Coming up, it's Mansfield news, talk and information.
And a little later in the episode, you will have a chance to win a $25 gift card to a Mansfield restaurant of your choice with our Mansfield trivia question, courtesy of Joe Jenkins Insurance.
Let's take a look at the stories we're covering this week.
Groundbreaking set for Mansfield's innovation hub.
A hotel and convention center are planned to complement the stable entertainment district. In a moment with the mayor.
Legacy thespians earn multiple award nominations.
Trial of Mansfield father delayed until May.
Mansfield ISD to host job fair for educators.
Mansfield Reads event is just a couple of weeks away.
Historic downtown car show rolls in May 10.
And in sports, legacy grad making waves in Midland.
And in the talk segment, Steve shares his interview with Mansfield ISD school board candidate Jason Thomas. We are Mansfield's only source for news, talk and information. This is about Mansfield.
Hey there, it's Luke from Cool Hand Electric. Are you tired of dealing with plugs or lights that just won't cooperate? Well, don't fret. Give us a call. Worried about power outages or surges damaging your precious electronics? We've got you covered. Whether it's a whole house generator or surge protection, our solution oriented Cool Hands are ready to tailor the perfect option that suits your needs and budget. At Cool Hand Electric, excellence is still cool.
Are you ready to create unforgettable memories? Picture this, an enchanting event venue nestled amidst breathtaking landscapes with panoramic views right here in Mansfield. The Grand View Event Center is the perfect setting to bring your vision to life. From intimate gatherings to large scale extravaganzas, the Grand View has flexible spaces to accommodate any occasion, be it a graduation or school function, art exhibition, or birthday or anniversary party. Book your next unforgettable experience at thegrandviewmansfield.com. That's thegrandviewmansfield.com. The Grand View Event Center, where memories are made and dreams become reality. Book your event today.
Hi, I'm Haley Hudson and you're listening to About Mansfield.
Welcome back to About Mansfield. This portion of the news is brought to you by the Grand View Event Venue in Mansfield.
A new chapter in business and innovation begins in Mansfield on Monday, April 21st, as Selmark Corporation and the city of Mansfield break ground on a major new innovation center development. Verdexium is a planned 140,000 square foot business and innovation center designed to support office space, production, robotics, and community events. It will also include the Verdexium Fusion Museum of Art, Science, and Engineering, a facility aimed at blending technology and creativity to engage visitors of all ages. The event will feature remarks from city officials, Selmark executives, and local leaders. Attendees will have the opportunity to view renderings of the facility, which is expected to open in early 2026, and connect with others in the business and innovation community. The groundbreaking ceremony will take place from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at 2201 Heritage Parkway, and all are welcome to attend.
The Mansfield City Council held a regularly scheduled meeting on Monday evening. The following opinions of those of Michael Evans may not necessarily reflect those of the Mansfield City Council. We say every other Tuesday morning, top of the morning.
Top of the morning to you, my friend.
Michael Evans is here today, and let's just jump right into what happened Monday night. Started off with a safety award.
It did. We had a, had a long meeting. We started at 1:00 PM on yesterday, and our meeting, our afternoon meeting began by presenting our court staff with the municipal traffic safety initiatives award. The city of Mansfield Municipal Court received the honorable mention from the Texas Municipal Courts Education Center. So we want to say congratulations to our courts team. They are awesome people.
Yeah. And then a bevy, a cornucopia of proclamations, including two in April and one in May. I'll just go ahead and let you do all three.
That, that is correct. City Council proclaimed May as Historic Preservation Month, celebrating the role of history in our lives here in Mansfield. And also to celebrate, we're going to have activities throughout the month of May, like the Third Annual Historic Downtown Car Show. And I just mentioned that because I, that's one of my vices. But also during our regular meeting, we proclaimed April as Autism Awareness Month, emphasizing the importance of early diagnosis and early intervention in supporting affected individuals to thrive and reach their fullest potential. And we also proclaimed April 13th through April 19th as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, acknowledging the critical role that these professionals provide as they are often the first voice. Are you here after you dial 911? These are real heroes, Steve. They are real heroes.
Absolutely. And then before getting into the business at hand, you recognized our state champions.
Yes, we did. Mansfield Summit High School's boys basketball team, and they won five division, or Division 5A, and they're the state champions. This is the first time in the history of the school, and we are proud of them.
Let's get into the, the business now. There were five consent agendas, and let's, let's pick out the highlights.
All right, let's, let's see, you know, as you normally call them the sexy ones.
The sexy ones.
See if I can find some. All right. So, all right. So here we go. So council in regard to the consent agenda items, we approved paving and sidewalk improvements for Elizabeth Lane, land purchase of six acres that incorporates into the Walnut Creek Linear Trail. That's always sexy. And we also approved a resolution for additional funding for the Holland Road Phase Two improvements.
All right. And you concluded the evening.
With resolution, resolution, resolution.
For economic, economic development resolutions.
Yeah, but we've got a big one here. Amending, amending the master development agreement for, wait for it, for a convention center and hotel project. Yes, sir. Right here in Mansfield, Texas. So in regard to approving that for fiscal year 25, annual operating budget for the new multi-use stadium as well at Stable Street Entertainment District in partnership with Rev Entertainment. What that means is, so one, we're going to start work on that new convention center and hotel project, which is a yay. After that, we also now have the staff that's going to be running or programming the new stadium. They are moving to town. So we're going to get those corporate dollars here in Mansfield. And also, city council approved the police department's request to apply and receive grant funding from the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles Crime Prevention Authority. And this is to continue a tri-county task force combating vehicle theft, burglary, fraud-related vehicle crimes, and all that kind of stuff. And then we also approved two resolutions intended to improve citywide mobility in our city with the first using part of the street maintenance fund for Paul Street and Holland Road improvements up to about $79,000. Then the second resolution approved the purchase of two acres and acceptance of five acres of land dedicated for future drainage improvements for park space and things of that nature. And my friend, that was it.
Lots going on Monday night, though.
A whole lot is going on on Monday night. And, and Steve, as always, if people want to view the entire meeting, just go to mansfieldtexas.gov and they can see everything.
That, my friend, is what's called a moment with the mayor. That is Mayor Michael Evans. We do this every other Tuesday. We do this, the Tuesday after every city council meeting. And so, Mr. Mayor, as we always say, go forth, have a great day, and we'll see you in a couple weeks.
See you in a couple.
Legacy High School's Theater Department has earned five nominations in the Broadway Dallas High School Musical Theater Awards, a regional program that celebrates excellence in high school musical theater across North Texas. Legacy was recognized in several major categories, including outstanding musical, direction, ensemble, and technical crew. In addition, Senior Bryn Thompson received a nomination for Outstanding Lead Actor for her performance in the school's production of the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee. The Broadway Dallas High School Musical Theater Awards involve dozens of schools from across the region. Each production is evaluated by a panel of industry professionals who attend live performances and score them in a variety of artistic and technical categories. Winners will be announced during a formal awards ceremony on Friday, May 17th, at the Music Hall at Fair Park in Dallas. The event draws students, families, educators, and theater supporters from all over the area to honor outstanding achievements in high school theater.
A Mansfield father is awaiting trial for allegedly waiting over two hours to call 911 after his toddler daughter ingested a fentanyl laced pill. Jury selection in the trial for Michael Ray Reed has been delayed until May. Reed is accused of waiting more than two hours to call 911 after his two-year-old daughter, Navea, ingested fentanyl-laced pills. The incident happened in February of 2024. Police say Reed attempted to make the child vomit and tried to order an overdose reversing drug online instead of calling for help. Navea was taken to the hospital but died 10 days later. Reed is charged with causing serious bodily injury to a child. His sister, Jamie Popovich, who lived with him at the time, also faces charges of abandoning and endangering a child. Inside the apartment, officers reported finding drug paraphernalia, including drugs that tested positive for fentanyl, a syringe, and a loaded gun. Reed remains in Tarrant County Jail. Popovich is out on bond.
Educators in the fields of science and math who are considering a career move may want to explore opportunities with the Mansfield Independent School District. The district is hosting a job fair on Saturday, April 26th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Center for the Performing Arts located on Debbie Lane in Mansfield. The event is designed to connect qualified candidates with open teaching positions across the district. Attendees will have the chance to meet campus administrators, learn more about the district's hiring process, and potentially take part in onsite interviews. Mansfield ISD reports that it offers a range of benefits, including competitive compensation, professional development opportunities, and access to an affordable staff health clinic. The district also notes it provides the highest starting salary for first-year teachers in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. All interested candidates are encouraged to register ahead of time at mansfieldisd.org/jobfair2025. Additional information about open positions, district benefits, and application requirements can be found on the district's website. Again, the Mansfield ISD Job Fair takes place Saturday, April 26th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Center for the Performing Arts.
Have you read this year's Mansfield Reads selection? The featured book is We Were the Lucky Ones by Georgia Hunter. As part of the annual Mansfield Reads program, the city is inviting the public to a special evening with the author on Thursday, March 2nd, at the Mansfield Public Library, starting at 7:00 PM. Mansfield Reads is a community initiative that encourages residents to read and then discuss the same book, promoting literacy and connection through a shared literacy experience. We Were the Lucky Ones is a historical novel based on the true story of Georgia Hunter's family, tracing their survival as Polish Jews during World War II. Separated across continents, they endure incredible hardships relying on hope, resilience, and determination to reunite against all odds. The book has gained widespread attention since its release and was recently adapted into a TV series on Hulu, bringing the story to an even broader audience. And again, that author talk is set for May 2nd at 7:00 PM. The event is free to attend, but registration is required, so log on to mansfieldtexas.gov.
Car enthusiasts and history buffs alike are invited to the Third Annual Historic Downtown Mansfield Car Show, happening Saturday, May 10th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The free event will take place on Walnut Street and in the adjacent parking lot at 108 West Broad Street in Mansfield. Hosted by the Mansfield Historic Landmark Commission, the car show is part of Historic Preservation Month and celebrates the city's longstanding automotive heritage, which dates back to 1906. Visitors can expect a wide range of classic and custom cars and trucks representing different eras of Mansfield's history. The event is open to the public, and anyone interested in showcasing a vehicle can register in advance online. It's a great opportunity to explore local history, connect with the community, and enjoy a day surrounded by vintage and modern vehicles.
A potpourri of topics abounds, and we'll talk about it because sports is next.
I'm Philip Washington, Chief Investment Officer of Stonehill Wealth Management and host of the Wealth Building Made Simple podcast. First book I read in college was Rich Dad, Poor Dad, and it changed my life. Since then, I've read tons and tons of books on money. And what I've done is taken those lessons, simplified them, and I talk about those lessons on my podcast, Wealth Building Made Simple. So come hang out with us. We're on every major platform, Apple Podcasts, Spotify, and on YouTube. Wealth Building Made Simple.
Hey, it's Steve Cassio. And are you ready to make your voice heard? Want to bring out your ideas to life through captivating conversations and engaging visuals? Look no further than Podcast Mansfield Recording Studio, your one-stop destination for award-winning audio and video podcast recording. Equipped with cutting-edge microphones, crystal-clear audio recording, and high-definition cameras, we're here to turn your ideas into engrossing content. But it's not just about the equipment. We're dedicated to bringing out the best in your content. Whether you're a seasoned pro or just starting out, we're here to elevate your podcasting game. We'll even help you with intro music, transitions, voiceover, and that professional polish that sets your podcast apart. So whether you're into interviews, storytelling, or simply sharing your expertise, Podcast Mansfield can help bring your podcasting dreams to life. Visit podcastmansfield.com. Podcast Mansfield, where creating your podcast masterpiece, has never been easier.
At Methodist Mansfield Medical Center, we've been caring for our home team for over 15 years. Today, you'll find award-winning physicians on the medical staff, advanced neurosurgery, a Level 3 trauma center, critical care for newborns, and comprehensive orthopedic care. Methodist Mansfield, delivering the care our friends, neighbors, and home team depend on. That's community, and why so many people trust Methodist.
In sports, it's a big week for Mansfield ISD athletics, especially on the track. Thirty-three individual athletes and eight relay teams are headed to the UIL Region 1 5A Track and Field Meet. Meanwhile, over 160 MISD athletes are competing in the area round this week as the district continues to shine across multiple events. Expect strong performances as these students aim for spots at the state level. Let's turn to baseball and softball. We all know the song, "Anything You Can Do, I Can Do Better." It's from the Broadway play, Annie Get Your Gun. And the Legacy High softball girls have every right to sing the song to their baseball boy counterparts. Let's start with the boys. Legacy Boys have posted a 16-8 overall record this season, second-place, 8-2 record in the district. The Broncos have won five of their last six outings, including two recent romps over Crowley, 11-5 and 11-1. The Legacy Boys have just five games left before heading into the playoffs. Let's turn to the Lady Broncos. The girls have posted a 21-5 overall record and are in first place in the district with a perfect 11-0 record and are sitting on an 11-game winning streak. As of this recording, the Lady Broncos have two games left in the season before heading into postseason play. And speaking of legacy, our athlete spotlight of the week is Legacy graduate Parker Ibrahimi, who is making waves at Midland College. Now he's a key player for the Chaparral's baseball team. Sophomore Ibrahimi has stepped into a leadership role as the only returning everyday starter. He's holding down shortstop and making big contributions both at the plate and on defense. Midland College holds an impressive overall record of 37 wins and five losses, with a conference record of 21-3, and is currently ranked 11th nationally. Ibrahimi is a Dallas Baptist University commit, and he has earned honorable mention, All Western Junior College Athlete Conference honors, batting .337 with seven home runs, 47 RBIs, eight stolen bases. That is our athlete spot of the week. Legacy graduate Parker Ibrahimi. That is a look at sports. If you have a comment about the show, the news, whatever's on your mind locally, the good, the bad, the ugly, doesn't matter. You want to comment about the elections? Bring it on. You can reach us by voicemail at 817-435-2938. Again, 817-435-2938. Our city council and school board candidate interviews are now available on the About Mansfield website. Aboutmansfield.com is the place to go. You can spend 30 minutes with each of the candidates, or at least 30 minutes with each candidate who granted us an interview. Again, aboutmansfield.com, and at the top of the page, click on the interviews link. This coming Sunday, April 20th, usually we do our national day of, well, this is a reverent one. Easter Sunday is one of the most significant Christian holidays as it commemorates the resurrection of Jesus Christ, believed to have occurred three days after his crucifixion. The date of Easter changes yearly, falling on the first Sunday after the full moon following the spring equinox. While rooted in Christian tradition, Easter has also included some customs with pagan origins, such as egg decorating and the Easter bunny, both symbols of spring and renewal. Traditional foods like lamb, hot cross buns, and Easter breads are also enjoyed worldwide. Do you feel like going shopping or perhaps dining out this Sunday? Be sure to check with your favorite retailer or restaurant to make sure they're open before heading out. And from this Catholic to you and yours, may peace be with you.
Coming up after the break, we turn the page to the features section.
I'm Angel Bisadi, and today we're talking about a disease that has been making headlines: measles.
In this week's Cocktail of the Week, imagine walking through the Garden of Versailles in full spring bloom.
We are Mansfield's only source for news, talk, and information. I'm Colleen Daniel, and this is about Mansfield.
This portion of the news was brought to you by the Grand View Event Venue in Mansfield.
Hey there, it's Luke from Cool Hand Electric. Are you tired of dealing with plugs or lights that just won't cooperate? Well, don't fret. Give us a call. Worried about power outages or surges damaging your precious electronics? We've got you covered. Whether it's a whole house generator or surge protection, our solution-oriented Cool Hands are ready to tailor the perfect option that suits your needs and budget. At Cool Hand Electric, excellence is still cool.
Congratulations to Jasmine Gray Payne, who knew that prior to its name change in 1940, Highway 287 was known as State Highway 34. When we come back, this week's trivia question. I'm Steve Cassio, and this is about Mansfield.
Hi, this is Joe Jenkins with Joe Jenkins Farmers Insurance, specializing in auto, home, commercial, and life insurance. I was born and raised here in Mansfield, Texas. We're active in the community, and Mansfield's a town we really care about. Our office has over 30 years' experience in the insurance industry, and we're passionate about what we do and about customer service. For a free quote, please visit our website at joejenkinsinsurance.com or give us a call at 817-472-6058. Once again, that website is joejenkinsinsurance.com.
It is time right now for the highly coveted, wildly popular About Mansfield trivia question. If you are the first person to email the correct answer to trivia@aboutmansfield.com, you will receive a $25 gift card to a Mansfield restaurant of your choice, brought to you by Joe Jenkins Insurance. Whether you're looking for homeowners, auto, commercial, or any other type of insurance, Joe has helped Mansfield area residents understand the insurance coverage that best fit their needs since 2010. You can find him on the internet at joejenkinsinsurance.com. I've mentioned this before, gonna mention it again, not everyone wins on a Wednesday. So if you're listening on Thursday, Friday, or whenever, give it a shot. You may be taking home a $25 restaurant gift card. Colleen, tee it up.
Well, Steve, Mansfield ISD's R.L. Anderson Stadium was the lone hotspot for Friday Night Lights for many years here in Mansfield. To accommodate a growing school district, Mansfield ISD constructed a second and much larger facility, Vernon Newsome Stadium. This week's trivia question is, what year did Vernon Newsome Stadium open, and what is its official seating capacity? Email your answer to trivia@aboutmansfield.com. Again, in what year did Vernon Newsome Stadium open, and what is its official seating capacity? Good luck, and thanks to Joe Jenkins Insurance for the gift card.
Hi, I'm Dr. Janine Huang with United Dermatology Associates, and you are listening to About Mansfield.
Welcome back to About Mansfield, your audio newspaper. Let's open up the features section. Angel Bisadi is here with a measles update, what it is and what to do if you get them in Methodist Mansfield news to know. Angel?
Measles. It's a highly contagious virus that can lead to serious complications. But the good news is that it's preventable. To help us break down the facts, we're joined by Dr. Mary Weaver, a highly respected board-certified family physician at the Methodist Family Health Center in Lake Prairie. Dr. Weaver, thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you for having me, Angel. It's a pleasure to be here on your podcast.
To begin, will you explain to our listeners what exactly measles is?
Absolutely. So measles is also known as rubiola, but pretty much everyone knows it as measles, is a viral infection, and it primarily affects children, although adults can get it as well. It's a viral infection that starts off with kind of a flu-like symptom, so fever, cough, runny nose, and watery red eyes. And then after, a few days after that, maybe even up to two weeks after, that's when you get the rash that everyone thinks of when they think of measles. So that red, blotchy, spotty rash that starts at the top of your head and then goes down your body kind of thing. Most people are very ill from measles, but it's, for most, it's kind of like the flu, but much worse. But what makes measles worse than the flu is you can have very serious complications, including pneumonia and brain swelling called encephalitis. And then in some cases, you even die from measles. This, Texas has actually had two deaths from measles in an eight-year-old girl and a seven-year-old girl. So it's very, can be a very dangerous disease.
So how can people protect themselves from the measles? Is there a way to prevent it?
They came out with a measles vaccine in the early 60s. And before this vaccine, we saw, the US saw millions of cases each year, and measles was responsible for tens of thousands of deaths. Thankfully, after the vaccine, which is known as the MMR vaccine, which contains measles, mumps, and rubella, after that vaccine, the numbers reduced dramatically. And we actually were considered eradicated from measles in the 1990s. But as vaccine numbers went down and more international travel to places where measles wasn't eradicated, we started to see measles come back in certain communities. The best and most effective way to protect yourself from measles is to do the MMR vaccine. It has been around, like I said, for over 60 years now, and it's very effective at preventing measles. And it is a routine part of immunization. So you typically get the first dose when you're one, and then you get the second dose when you're four years old, four or six, right before you go to kindergarten. So it is very effective. It reduces your risk by 97% after the second dose. And for adults who are not sure if they've received the vaccine, you, there's a couple of different options you can do. One is you can get the vaccine. It's very safe. It's very effective. It doesn't have a lot of side effects besides your arms being sore. So it's very easy to get a booster. You could also do blood work with your doctor to check to see if you have immunity by doing a thing they're called vaccine titers. And so that would give you an idea if you needed to do the vaccine or not, kind of thing. But if you don't have access to do titers, then getting an MMR vaccine is very easy to do to help reduce your risk of measles. And actually, if you know that you've been in contact with somebody who's had measles, you can actually get a vaccine within three days of that interaction, and it, and it will prevent you from getting measles, like from actually getting sick from the measles. It's, it's one of the best vaccines we have, kind of thing.
How exactly does measles spread, and how easily can it spread?
So measles is one of the most contagious diseases that we know of. It spreads through the air, so it, in respiratory droplets. So when somebody sneezes or talks who has been infected with measles, those particles hang in the air, and it can hang in the air for two hours, even after a person has left the room. So those respiratory droplets just hang in the air for that long. That means that you don't even have to have direct contact with someone who's sick to catch it. So especially if you are not vaccinated, and you, for example, Great Wolf Lodge had recently had a person who was infectious there. So if you had even walked through the hallway where that person had coughed or sneezed or was talking and laughing, even if it's been two hours, you could potentially get measles from that. And if you haven't had the vaccine, you're 90% likely to get measles walking through an environment like that.
Are there any other precautions people can take to avoid getting the measles, especially if they're traveling or have been exposed?
Like we talked about, vaccine's the best thing you can do. But staying home and avoiding others can really help the spreading the virus. So if others can really help the spreading the virus. So if you feel like you're coming down with something, it's really important to stay home and not go to especially, you know, public places where you're going to come in contact with lots of people.
Well, thank you so much for sharing your expertise, Dr. Weaver. I know this information will help our listeners stay informed and safe.
No problem. It was my pleasure. And I hope all of our listeners can continue to stay healthy and help our community stay healthy as well.
Well, remember, measles is preventable, and by staying informed and vaccinated, we can help ourselves and our communities stay safe. I'm Angel Biasati, reporting for the About Mansfield podcast.
Shaken or stirred, you know it's going to be good, as Brian Certain serves up a drink that will have you dreaming of the gardens of Versailles in the spring in this week's cocktail of the week. Brian?
This week's feature is the Versailles Violet, a regal combination that pays homage to both French nobility's love for violet-scented luxuries and the grand palace gardens where exotic flowers were cultivated to please royal taste. The history of Creme de Violet is particularly fascinating. In the early courts of Versailles, violet was considered a royal flavor, with Marie Antoinette herself known to favor violet-scented pastilles. The liqueurs created to capture this coveted flavor in shelf-stable form, becoming a status symbol in the 18th century French society. But as always, don't worry about taking notes as I'm giving out the ingredients instructions. They're always posted on bourbongospel.com. Today, what are we going to need? We're going to need one and a half ounces of premium gin, a half ounce of Creme de Violet, a half ounce of fresh lemon juice, champagne to top. You don't need to go over top. We're mixing, so we, it's going to not stand on its own. And then if you can, crystallize violet, or at a minimum, a lemon twist for garnish. How do we make this royal indulgence? Full, first, fill the shaker with fresh ice, then add the gin, the creme de violet, and the lemon juice. Shake gently to preserve the delicate flavors. Double strain into a champagne flute, and then gently top with a well-chilled champagne. Garnish with the lemon twist. Flavor profile. First thing you're going to pick up is that delicate violet and the crisp gin. Then you're going to pick up the bright citrus and the fine bubbles from the champagne. And finally, the finish. It's going to be floral. It's going to be effervescence with a subtle botanical complexity. Violets were once prized so much at Versailles that they were grown year-round in special greenhouses. The purple color of creme de violet comes from actual violet flower petals. The garden of Versailles contained over 1,800 fountains during its heyday, and violet flowers were used to test perfume makers' ability due to their subtle scent. Pro tip, the key to this cocktail is balance. Too much creme de violet can easily make it taste like perfume. Too little, you don't even pick it up at all. So make sure you follow the instructions carefully. But always, I'm open to hear your take in input. If you've played with this cocktail and you have something to say, I'd love to hear it. You can reach me at brian@bourbongospel.com. And until next week, as Mark Twain said, too much of anything is bad. Too much whiskey, that's barely enough. Reporting for the About Mansfield podcast, I'm Brian Certain.
We're back in 60 seconds with Steve's interview with Mansfield ISD School Board candidate Jason Thomas.
Imagine a city where innovation knows no bounds, where dreams take flight, and the future unfolds before your very eyes. Welcome to Mansfield, a beacon of growth and a testament to vision. In the heart of Mansfield, a remarkable transformation is underway. But it's not just about the physical landscape. It's about the spirit that drives us forward, a spirit of collaboration that bridges cultures, a spirit of entrepreneurship that fuels prosperity, and a spirit of community that binds us as one. Mansfield is more than just a place. It's a canvas where diversity paints the picture of progress. From art festivals that ignite creativity to tech hubs that redefine boundaries, this city celebrates every voice, every passion. Mansfield, where growth knows no limits and the vision is limitless. Brought to you by the unstoppable spirit of the Mansfield Economic Development Corporation.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Lopez, the Senior Crime and Justice Reporter for WFAA, and you're listening to About Mansfield.
Welcome to Campaign 2025 in Mansfield. I'm Steve Casio, and today we are talking school board candidacy. And to my right, that would be to your left, we have my co-host who's been, this is now your second year of doing this with me, Karen Markucci.
I'm so excited that you asked me back.
And we're happy to have you here. And we talked about all of the things that you've done, the three terms with, we did that in Jesse Cannon's interview. So if anybody wants to know a little bit of background about Karen Markucci, go listen to Jesse Cannon's. And so in this case, we could just hop right into to our interview.
Oh, good. We can put him in the hot seat now.
In the hot seat today is running for place three, Jason Thomas. Welcome to About Mansfield.
Great. Thank you for having me.
Who is Jason Thomas, and why is he running for school board?
Okay, a little bit about me. My name's Jason Thomas. Originally from Birmingham, Alabama, born and raised, product of public school, Birmingham Public School System, K through 12, grade 12 years. Raised a little bit different. I'm 47. I'm a, what they call a Zenial.
A Zenial?
Zenial, yeah. That's something.
So it's like a Gen Z?
X and millennial, because I'm right on the cusp.
Oh, okay.
So yeah, I'm that generation that had rotary phones. There was no cordless phones. We went to, cell phones didn't exist.
Yeah.
No VCR. So I've transitioned through all the technology. And what makes me a little bit different than other Zenials is the fact that my parents were the silent generation. So they were very old school. My dad was born in 1929. My mom was born in 1939. So I was raised very different from my peers who also Zenial. So that makes me a little bit different. Live here in the Mansfield ISD area over in Grand Prairie for the past 15 years. Moved here by way of Atlanta, Georgia. I finished business school at Emory University, got a job out here in Arlington, Texas, selling propane and propane accessories. Like, my name was Hank Hill. And so that's what kind of brought, yeah, that's what, come on now. That's what brought me out here. And I was selling, I was in charge of propane operations from Oklahoma all the way down to the southern tip of Texas. So great learning curve, and I met the love of my life right before I moved here. Her name is Amanda, and she's an educator in the district, and she's been in education about 20 years. And she's made her way all the way up to principal. So love and support her. And we have two twin boys. Their names are Aaron and Jackson Thomas, and they are first graders.
It gets better. I just want you to know, I have twins as well. It does get better.
It's gotten better. After I got past age three, that was, it was just a wonderful transition because they could talk, they could tell me what they needed. They can even go get stuff for me. So it's, it's been good.
It's life-changing. I agree. But it does get better, even from here.
That whole, that whole getting things for me, it really is, is one of the perks of being a parent.
Definitely. And I'm there seven, so I have like 11, 12 more years of it. Hey, come, come grab this, come grab that.
That's right.
So, and your other question was, you know, why am I running for school board?
Yes, sir.
Well, you know, like I said, my kids just entered the district. So prior to the last two years, I've been really busy traveling all over the country with other jobs and stuff. And I really just started to sit down. And over the last three years, I've been hearing things about what's going on in the school board. And what I was hearing and what I was seeing, I didn't particularly care for, because policies were being made that weren't about making education better or helping the educators in the school district. When I talk about that, I'm talking about book bans. I'm talking about policies that just weren't very focused on enhancing education. And so I got to looking at that. And then I found out about a group called Patriot Mobile Action. And when I found out about them and found out what they stood for and what they were doing as far as Tarrant County goes, I became even more bothered, because they were putting partisanship into education. And there are no Republicans and Democrats when it comes to kids. And I had a real problem with that, because at the end of the day, you know, the focus needs to be all kids, and it needs to be everybody.
I think that's a good point, too, if people don't realize. But the school board election, when you run, you don't file as a Republican or a Democrat. These are nonpartisan seats.
And the same applies to city council.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so those are the things I didn't like. And then the fact that this group had not only gotten four members on our school board, but they'd gotten six, no, seven others throughout Tarrant County, taking over school boards all over. And so it just disturbed me that as a taxpayer, 50% of my property taxes go toward the school district. That's how the system's set up. And it disturbed me that a group not in my school district, not even in my county, can influence and make decisions on what happens to my kids and the other kids in the district. So that's why I'm running, to bring the focus back to the kids in the district, the teachers in the district, and to bring the power back to the taxpayers and the people in my ISD, because that's a problem for me.
Building on that a little bit, what are some specific opportunities for the board to do better? And why do you think you'll be effective in implementing that change?
Something the board can do better is better collaboration with the city of Mansfield and the surrounding cities, because I think there's information there that we're really missing the mark on when it comes to actually building budgets and everything else. Because the cities, and let's see, we have multiple cities in Mansfield. I think it's Grand Prairie, City of Arlington, City of Mansfield, and now I think Venus down there in Johnson County. So we've got all those cities. They know where the construction is happening, where the growth is coming. And I think with the school board, I know they meet now, but I think there needs to be more collaboration. And one thing I am, and I always will be, is a bridge builder. I'm sure that, you know, I reach out to other people and work across different industries. And currently, what I do now, I work for Tarrant County, and that's part of my job, to talk to the cities within Precinct Two. And in Precinct Two, we've got the same cities. And I think I do a good job as, in my current role as Director of Field Operations, of talking to all the cities and finding out what's going on. I think this school board, the school board, needs to do a better job of finding out where the housing permits are, where the housing charts, where the growth really is, so that we can be focused on moving the resources and the funds in the right direction.
What are some of the concerns? You say you, you've, you've gone out in the community, and you've talked to the people in your, your Precinct Two district. What are some of the major concerns that you're hearing, things that would apply to the school district?
Oh, well, I can tell you some things that would be affected. Primarily, if, the big thing that will be affected and people are concerned about is having a good school district. Because when you look at this area, the growth has been huge. It's been great. And people are coming here for the same reason I came here, probably the same reason you two came here, have a great school district. Because when you have a great school district, that means you have solid property values. And if you have solid property values, you can move into a house. And one thing I didn't mention, my minor in business school was real estate finance. Property values go up continually, on average, probably about, I think the number's like 5% per year, and that was back in 2009. So with values always going up, and you're having a good school district, it only helps towards that retirement goal and everything else that you have. So that's a concern. You know, people want their school district to be good and continue to be good. And I think we fell off a little bit. We were, had an A rating. I think we dropped down to a B, but a small drop, but I think we can get back up by focusing again, once again, on education and the kids.
So to build on that, what are some things that the board has done well that you would like to keep?
One thing that I think the board has done really, really good is actually focusing on the kids. You know, when I tune in to board meetings, I see they're praising the kids' accomplishments and everything else. And when I was in school, it was a long time ago, by the way, back when I was in school, that was big to me, you know, having the kids, you know, get to experience certain things and see the joy in their faces from being recognized for little things, spelling bee, you know, being recognized.
Oh, that's a big thing for me. I'm a terrible speller.
Math competition, whatever competitions they have within the district, I think it's a good thing. It's going to be great to see some at high school who just won the state championship. See, they're going to be recognized. And I think they do an outstanding job of making kids feel appreciated and respected and praised. They get the praise that they deserve, because sometimes they don't hear it at home.
So that'd be like our version, Mansfield's version of inviting the team to the White House, would be inviting the team to the, the school district board meeting and recognizing them in front of the, the entire district is.
And that's a real highlight, I will tell you, as a board member as well, to get, to meet some of these talented athletes. And then when they go make it big, you're like, oh, I met them way back when. It's pretty phenomenal. Well, that's interesting, because that brings me to another question, if you don't mind, Steve, I want to jump on in. If students had a vote in the school board decisions as to who gets elected, what issue do you think they would bring up for the board to consider?
Probably, I think with all the talk about housing costs and everything else, because, you know, housing costs have gone up, they want to be able to, I think their future is going to be a huge concern for them, future for jobs and employment opportunities and things like that. And I think right here in Mansfield, there's going to be a lot of good job opportunities and growth opportunities. So I think they're going to really be concerned about the future and being able to have a good future and have a house and those things, because the American dream is getting further and further away. And I think because they're so connected with the internet and social media and everything, and the algorithms are telling, are feeding them information, I think that's one of the top things that they're, that's at the top of their mind. Like, what is the future going to be like when I leave my mom's house? Can I ever leave my mom's house?
Yeah.
And dad's house? Can, you know, I think those are real concerns.
A real concern of mine, yes.
It is a real concern. My 24-year-old just moved back home.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think that's at the front of their mind, because they're seeing their brothers and sisters come back home. And, you know, some of them, they're probably thinking like, how can I do this? You know, can I have a bright future? Can Mansfield ISD help me with that? And I think Vision 2030 is something that I think is helping and focused on getting kids down that path. I think, if I remember right, it's life, career, and college-ready. Those three things, making, making sure the kids are life, career, and college-ready, and making sure that that happens. And I think that's going to be a real concern for them going forward, because they want those things, and they want that future, but it's looking bleaker and bleaker.
As a school board member, what do you see as the board's roles and responsibilities?
The board's roles and responsibilities are to provide oversight of policy and to ensure that the policies are focused on meeting the school board's objectives and ensuring that you're, we're supporting the superintendent achieve their goals, and making sure that the goals are focused on what the area needs. And that, once again, circles right back to what I was saying about collaboration across the cities, because the cities have goals and objectives, too. And the school district is an important piece of those goals and objectives. I know right here in Mansfield, I sit on all four of their terms boards. That's tax incentive distributions all. So I sit on all of them, and they have a lot of good things coming. And a lot of it is geared around the quality of students coming out, because they're putting jobs down here in the area. The city's putting jobs down here. They're putting think tanks down here to help people start small businesses. So we've got all these things on the horizon that'll be built in the next four to five years, right off of Heritage Parkway.
Exactly. Right next door, there is coming a, an Innovation Center.
Innovation Center, that's what it's called.
Is coming, is, is going to be built right next door.
And stuff like that. That Innovation Center is going to be a great tool for those kids who are worrying about their future. They can go in and come up with ideas. They could be the next, have the next million-dollar idea, but we got to set them up for success so that they can go down there, engage these people. And we got to continue as a school board to ensure that we're putting out the best product, so that the businesses want to come. Because truth be told, a lot of people live here. We've got a lot of houses and a lot of people living here, but a lot of people driving away to go to work. I spent the last, let's see, I've been here 15 years. I spent the last 13 years driving 45 minutes to work every day.
Yeah.
And now this is the first time in 14 years, in 15 years, that I'm able to actually have a short commute. I work over in Kendall now. And so, you know, I'm spoiled now. I've never had this in my life.
It's amazing. I have the same situation, and it's a mile to get to work, and I love it.
Yeah, my commute's seven minutes.
Outstanding. God bless you. Because I was up, when I lived in Pennsylvania some years ago, I, my commute was an hour and 20 minutes each way.
That's my husband's, yes. It's challenging. Talking about money and all the things that go on with that, it does cost a fair bit of money to run for school board. So can you tell us more about who your top three donors are?
My top three donors are friends of mine, people I went to school with. Little known fact, I attended the United States Military Academy at West Point. My first three years of education were there. Unfortunately, I didn't, I left my senior year and ended up finishing up at UAB for personal reasons with my mom. However, my top three donors are academy graduates who I forged a friendship with, and we've been friends since 1997. And so they had no problem, knowing who I am and what I stand for, no problem in supporting me.
So do you have any political action committees that are supporting you?
No PACs at all. All my fundraising has been friends and family. I haven't even made it out of friends and family round yet. So I really, I honestly haven't. And so with that being said, you know, And so, um, with that being said, you know, um, I've still yet to shake the local tree to see what assistance I can get here, so.
Being a school board trustee takes more time than just the couple of hours that it takes to be at a school board meeting. You have to go through training and, and to be a school board trustee, and there's much more than just, again, the couple of hours at a board meeting. The simple question is, do you have the time to do this? And what will you be sacrificing in order to be a school board trustee?
Okay, two questions? Okay, great. So, uh, so my, my personal motto is difficult takes a day, impossible takes a week with me. Um, you're sitting here talking to a gentleman who, um, when somebody tells me it's gonna take X amount of time, I tell him, nope, this is how much it's gonna take. Case in point, when I left the academy, transferred to UAB, and they said, okay. The advisor sat down and said, hey, we made your schedule for you, here's how long it's gonna take you. You graduate in three years and, you know, you have your engineering degree and everything, this is the schedule we made for you. So I looked at it, took it back, set down my schedule, said, this is the schedule I made for me. And I, he said, that's gonna be difficult. It's only an extra semester of school. I said, that's fine, I'll do it. And he was like, but that's, that's too many hours, how are you gonna do it? And I promise you, I not only went to school full-time, I'd wake up at 3:00 AM, go to UPS over on Oxmoor Boulevard in Birmingham, Homewood, Alabama, unload box trucks at UPS, eventually became a supervisor, and then I'd go to school the rest of the day. So 3:00 AM to 6:00 PM, that's what I did. I'm a kid who went to the academy, woke up, I'm a guy, I'm not a kid anymore, I'm a little old for that, I got a lot of gray now. But, um, I went to the academy at the tender age, well, actually, I went to basic training when I was in high school. Like I said, difficult takes a day, impossible takes a week. So it's all about prioritizing, it's all about making sure you do things. And when I was in high school, I did basic training and then, in, with full intention, joined the army, because I told you, my mom was silent generation, and in her generation, they had a two-room house, 12 kids.
Wow.
Once you turned 18, you had to go. And so she held on to those philosophies, and I had it in my head that I need to join the army. So that's what I was gonna do, and then pivoted and went to West Point. So that's just who I am when it comes to doing things. From military academy, I worked full-time, um, well, I worked full-time at UAB, finished, finished my degree, then got, took a job up in Pennsylvania.
So put your degree in, what kind of engineer?
Mechanical engineer.
Excellent.
Okay.
I'm a chemical, so, uh.
I know, I wanted to do chemical, but West Point didn't offer it, because I love chemistry. West Point only offered mechanical and civil.
I like this guy.
So, all right, to, to, to bring this all back to current day.
Yeah, the second question.
All right, uh, you're, you're serving on the school board, and you now have an appointment on, on Saturday from, say, nine to four. What are you normally doing on a Saturday that, that you'll have to give up?
Um, the biggest thing, um, and this is gonna be a real sacrifice, is, um, watching Alabama football.
Yeah. But that's only in, uh, in the winter.
It's only in the winter, it's only in the fall, in September to usually.
But you'll get some good football, you'll get some really good football in exchange.
It's usually from Labor Day until the national championship, but last year we weren't as fortunate. But, um, yeah, that'll be it. I'll be giving up football on Saturday. Other than that, there's no other sport in my eyes.
As I'm about to go to Phoenix for spring training baseball.
Oh, I, you know, I could play baseball really good, but I never got into watching it. I can watch it live, I cannot watch it on TV.
That's golf for me, no way.
Another, do you have another question? Let's get out of this.
Oh, you had another question, though?
No, that was it. That was it. I asked a two-part question. Do you have the time to do this, and what are you giving up?
Well, I would give up football on Saturday, and then, um, the other thing is, um, I'll give up a little bit of sleep. One thing I pride myself in is going to sleep like 9:00, 9:30, you can find me in the bed.
Yeah.
Like TV shows, uh, who needs a TV in their bedroom? Let me go to sleep.
There we go.
Because I need to recharge.
So switching gears a little bit and talking about what you do, now that I'm not on the school board, I have a lot of time to spend on a lot of legislative priorities and things that are going on. I've been able to spend a lot more time looking at bills. So that was one of the questions I have for you. Are there any bills that are in the legislature currently that you have strong feelings about or that you're watching or advocating for or against?
I think the, um, I, I think House Bill Three, is that the, the voucher bill?
Oh, yes.
That's the one I'm really, um, watching and paying close attention to, because, um, because of nature, because vouchers, I'll just say it, you know, don't like them, not in favor of them. I think it's a situation where, um, people are being duped, um, by the phrase, you know, school choice. Had an interesting conversation, um, a couple of years ago, I was at the hospital, and somebody, um, gentleman was there, he's like, ah, I can't wait till I get vouchers. So I get a voucher, I can send my kid to private school. And I asked him, I said, so how are you gonna pay the difference? And he was like, what do you mean, pay the difference? I said, yeah, private school's about $20,000, $40,000, so per year, you gotta make up that difference. Like, it's not gonna cover it all. I said, no, that's not how it works. They're gonna give you an amount, and then you gotta make up the difference. And so people don't fully understand what that is.
Correct.
And so I think, um, as far as like, um, in my opinion, I feel like they're probably gonna pass. And if they do pass, I think the, I don't know, I don't know, we'll have to wait and see what happens, uh, as far as the impact for the school district goes. But I, I am a believer that people will go and test the waters, but I think they're gonna come right back, because there are quite a few barriers to that private school education that I don't think a lot of people plan or prepare for. People who are already doing it will continue to do it, and they're not on our, on the school district's roles anyway.
And I just wanted to clarify a little bit, that House Bill Two and House Bill Three are being considered together, um, in the House. And so even though they're separate bills, the thought is, is that they're gonna be passed the same. And so, um, I guess technically, House Bill Three is about the school choice opportunity, and House Bill Two is about the funding. But again, they're considering those two together, so I just wanted to clarify that.
And then there's also the underlying of, all right, I'm gonna send my, my kid to private school, the, the school's 45 minutes away, well, wait, the, the school's not gonna come pick him up? There's, and there's no, there's no busing? I, I have to drive my child a minimum of 45 minutes, depending on traffic and.
And depending on where the school is.
And, and there, uh, there are no school lunches? And, and now I gotta, I gotta make my kids lunch every day? And there's, there's more to it than just the.
Right.
The, how am I gonna pay for what's not included in the voucher?
Right. And I, and like I said, I think people are gonna test the water, because the novelty of saying, my kids go to private school, it's a cool thing, right? It's one of those, hey, nice, hey, my kids go to this great private school. But once they see the reality of it, I think a lot of people are gonna bounce back and come back to the public schools, will happily accept them back, and then we'll, we'll go from there. But we gotta see.
So, uh, kind of along those lines, I've been amazed at what public schools can offer our students. The, the classes my children have been able to take is just mind-boggling to me. And so what subject or classes now offered in school that you wish you could have taken when you were in school?
Oh, I think I would have done, like, I know here, they have a lot in the audiovisual arena. I love that. Because one thing I did when I was in elementary school, we had a audio-video club, and we'd go around, we'd make videos, we'd do the editing, we'd do everything else. And I, Birmingham Public Schools, I never had that again after fifth grade.
Well, and I have to give a plug to Steve here, so not only could you learn these skills, but you would have the opportunity to intern at a place.
I was gonna say, you need a job, you can work here.
But, but Steve's invested a lot in our students and given them opportunities to use their skills. And I have a daughter that's been involved with that too, and she's currently working with a marketing firm. It is a tremendous opportunity, sign me up.
Yeah, it was super fun, but we, you know, it was a long time ago, and our cameras were a lot bigger than anything you have now. It had a cassette on the side, and you had to learn how to prop it up, you had to set it up, get the right angles and the whole nine. And that was in, that was in like fourth or fifth grade.
I'm gonna give you three words, and just let you roll with it. Diversity, equity, and inclusion.
All right, so, let's go. All right, so as far as diversity goes, um, Mansfield ISD is probably one of the most diverse school districts I've seen. When you look at the demographics of the district, um, I mean, it's, I wanna say 33% African-American, 29% Hispanic, um, and 24%, no, 25% Caucasian, and then the rest is just a rainbow. It's a litany of folks from all different races, all different religions. So, and diversity is a good thing, because one thing I'll bring to the school board, it's not just diversity in race, but diversity in way of thought. Because if you look at the school board in its current state right now, um, you've got doctors, you've got professionals in other arenas. I'm gonna come with the engineer's perspective. I'm gonna come with a more of a financial dig in and look at it and think of things a little bit differently, probably than some of the other school board members. And you need to have a diverse school board from, in, with a diversity of thought, because the district has a lot of things going on. We're building a lot of buildings right now. I've done lots of construction projects, I've done a lot of project management. So those are things that I can look at differently than some of the peers. So that's one thing. So can't get away from diversity, it's here, the district is diverse, the school board is gonna be diverse in trains of thoughts and everything else, and I think it's a good thing. Equity, um, all schools should be treated equal, no matter whether you're in South Arlington, whether you're in Grand Prairie, whether you're down in Johnson County, or in Mansfield proper. You know, they should be funded equally, they should be visited by school board members equally, they should be, you know, scored equally. You know, when a principal's not, or an educator's not performing, they need to be handled equally. So, um, shouldn't be different rules for different folks.
Yeah.
I'm a firm believer in that. And the inclusion part, um, bottom line, inclusion is great. And here's why, because at the end of the day, heaven forbid something happened to one of my boys, right? Because it's all over the place. We're building all these buildings, and guess what we have to do with these buildings? We have to be compliant with the local code. And that local code involves handicap access, it involves all these other things. We don't just build a conference room and not have visual aids or things like that to help people. You have to put Braille on the signs. So education is inclusive. Um, can I tell a quick story?
Tell a quick story.
Okay. My cousin Walter, he's a bunch older, like I said, my parents are older, Walt, so Walter's older. Walter was born blind, okay? He's born legally blind, couldn't see anything. And Walter, despite his disability, graduated high school. My cousin Walter went on to University of Alabama in Birmingham, graduated college, and he went on to become a productive member of society, earning an income, paying his tax dollars, and helping to push this country forward. So only thing that made that possible was the fact that he was included. He had an opportunity to get those things despite his disability. So inclusivity is necessary. And, you know, I think it's, no matter what, you have to include kids with IEPs, you have to be able to provide, because at the end of the day, we all make this place called the United States go around. And everybody can and will contribute if given the opportunity, and they're included.
With the last couple of questions, Karen, what you got?
Well, I've got a fun one for you, just another one. Uh, this is, this has been a lot of fun for me, asking other candidates this, but if the school board had a mascot, what would it be?
Current state, it would be the Patriot Mobile Action icon, because four of our school board members were posted up and funded by Patriot Mobile Action. According to their literature, this is not something I made up, back in 2022, they put it out there and said, um, Kezia Farrar, Craig Tippings, who I'm running against, Bianca Benavides Anderson, and Courtney Lackey Wilson was the fourth one, were all supported by Patriot Mobile Action, which means they have four seats on the school board, which also means four out of seven is a majority. That means they can do whatever they want to do. So that means Patriot Mobile Action runs Mansfield ISD, which also means they can make and call all the shots in Mansfield ISD. And they're from South Lake and not from Mansfield. So, current state, that would be the logo. If we change some things, I think we can come up with another one.
Do you have any ideas?
Let's change it first, and then I'll get back to you.
Okay. In the couple of minutes we have left, if, if anybody out there listening wanted more information about Jason Thomas, uh, do you have a Facebook, a website, a TikTok, Tinder? What's going on with you?
I don't have a Tinder, my wife would kill me.
You don't have a Tinder?
Okay. All right. And is that even a thing still?
I don't know.
Okay.
Been married 38 years.
I've been married 15, so I don't have a clue. So honey, I'm not on any dating sites.
There you go.
Um, well, you can find, um, my campaign page is votejasonthomas.com. All my handles are votejasonthomas.com. So you can find me on, I'm most active on Facebook on my campaign page. Um, I am an open book, all my socia's are wide open, so you could feel free to go and grab me there, and, um, yeah, I think that's it.
Anything else you wanna add before, before we say goodbye?
Well, I just want to let, ask that everybody, please take the time to listen to this podcast. Know that this is who I am, I'm a, um, product of some silent generation parents, um, rooted in traditional values, um, grew up in the church, and I'm out here in Texas, and I'm trying to do what's right for kids and for the constituents and the people who pay their tax dollars into the school district. And so I wanna return the power to you and give you an opportunity for your voice to be heard, and to, I wanna make sure that Mansfield ISD is the school district's choice,